Ready? All right, today is September 8th, 2021, and this is the Goodhue Council. City of Goodhue Council meeting, we're gonna stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You don't have any other additions to the agenda? Nothing to add? Okay, so can we approve the agenda? We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second? So we have a first and a second to approve the agenda, any discussion? None? Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Approve the minutes from the August 25th, 2021 council meeting, do we have a motion?
All motion.
Second? Okay, we have a first and a second for the minutes of the August 25th, 2021 council meeting. Uh, any other discussion? Not? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Old business.
Uh, that's a number, my discussion will be at number nine, so I don't think I have anything else on your one.
No business, new business, new garage permit, Dave Kylo.
Dave?
You're up early.
Perfect. I was told to have a map.
We'd like to see him, that's for sure. Thank you.
Oh, yep, okay. I'll give Dick one. So... The variances that Lori gave me, the white line is the property line. There's a thirty foot setback and on the front, oh, that is a four foot setback, correct?
Um, four from the side and five from the rear.
Yep.
So it looks like you're...
But I decided, I just decided to go a ten foot setback.
Yep.
I mean, so I got my very, um, clearly in, on this stuff. The end of the streets over here, the yellow, the yellow in the waterway is the base of the waterway. Uh, that's the whole point of the waterway. So clearly, the shed is twenty-four by twenty-six. And it's about the same distance to the north as the old Hanny building. The green in there is where the waterway is now, if you go to the back page, please. The green is where the, the waterway, the, the top of the waterway goes. And that was all supposed to be filled in from years ago. So clearly, I could've done a slab-on-grade pad if that fill wouldn't have went to the other side, the way it did. Um, but that garage, I'm gonna have to pour, uh, footing for a wall. And, uh, it won't be filling in any, any other than, uh, it'd just be wall. It's gonna cost me more money, of course, now, but the variances that I got from Lori are exceeding.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, so... I wanna build a garage. And I don't, it's, it's, it's not any farther north than the existing building that was, the old Hanny building that was there many years ago, so...
The shed we're looking at, that's the building you're, you're, you're gonna go?
It's a, it's a garage, I put shed, or just 'cause it was, I'm not very good at it, actually I have my coat ready to report.
And how big is that?
Twenty-four by twenty-six.
So that, so that really isn't proportional to really what it is, is it?
Yep.
That's, that would be proportional to the house.
Yep.
Okay.
Should be, 'cause that's thirty feet.
No, but I mean the, the size.
Should be proportional.
To the house, yeah.
Yep.
Looks small compared to the house.
It does, doesn't it?
Okay, yep.
'Cause if you look at the thirty foot setback on, uh, on the property line.
Sure.
And look at twenty-four, that's pretty close to the ten foot setback. I did it on Google Earth, so...
Will this be one-story, two-story?
Just a nine-foot sidewall. I'm gonna build it, but I'm gonna have somebody come in and pour, do the concrete work. So I got permits, I get the Goodhue City and the county.
You just come here and, um, I'll get it to the county, too.
I give you both of them?
Um, the counties are inspectors, so, um, it starts out here, you do a Goodhue city.
Do I give you both of them?
Um, are you talking the City of Goodhue building permit application?
Yeah, the two that you gave me, yeah, one was the county and one was the city.
Come here.
Both of them come here?
Yes, and then you will need your drawings.
These?
Yeah, this might be enough, I don't know. They'll ask you if there's, is there some more?
Normally they're gonna know, you know, is it gonna be two by four, two by six, so they like to have a, kind of a, like, when we approve house plans, they kinda go through, may not down in real detail, but something, something they know. Excuse me?
How do I, what do we, do I gotta get a draft?
I, I, I don't think the city would require that, but the county might, because they have to know what they're inspecting. To make sure that your plant, if they approve the permit, Dave.
Well, the county, the county, according, I read that today, according to the county thing, it was just, 'cause I'm building the building, I'm just having a guy come and do the concrete work. So according to that thing you gave me was, I didn't need any...
How about I get to Michelle Inger's number tomorrow? And then, um, you can just give her a call and ask her how detailed it has to be.
The, the permits last a year?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just gonna do the concrete work this year and then build it next spring? So, I just need the, obviously I needed the...
Will there be a driveway up to the garage?
It'll eventually be concrete, but it'll be pre-structured out. But, I don't know. The setback, the setback on that side is four feet and I'm going back at least ten, so...
Do we have any, there's no covenants as far as matching or?
There's no covenants on this part of that, on those lots, there's no covenants whatsoever. Um, so this would be, I guess it would just be an accessory structure, but I'm sure it'll look nice.
Yeah, oh yeah, that one, I know.
The siding and everything, it's gonna be the same.
So it'll, it'll look good, yeah. It's kinda like over here where Arnie Brewer's got, you know, that house kinda matches that garage, originally that Leroy McCoon.
It's gonna be the same siding, same everything.
So, do, um, do we have a motion to approve a new garage permit?
Yeah, all motion.
You have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Not? All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Um, maybe Lori wants to have it, just so she knows when you're coming in, Lori, give her a... Oh, okay, all right, all right, okay, we'll put her in.
I'll put nothing on screen if I could keep it.
Yeah, 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 okay. Okay, all right, good.
Put it in my file.
Yeah.
You can't have it there.
Thanks, Dave. Have a good night. Next up, squad car updated information. Josh is on the docket.
Hey, how's Josh?
Thank you.
Josh, here's Mike.
Oh, yep. I apologize to everybody right now, I'm kinda have a sinus infection, so, um, give me just a second to handle these out.
We did on the school board when we were done with the board, we had a bit of bonfire. I can tell that might be coming here someday.
Okay, um, yeah, nothing has worked out so far, um, getting this all figured out. Um, all the, the majority of the quotes that we were given earlier this year, nothing has gone through. Uh, everything was raised in price, and then things that I was actually quoted, I talked to the employees, they never had to do paperwork, and they ended up giving me certain deals, so I'm gonna walk you through what I have here. So, right now, we're going through the state bid, that's the price that they get for a squad car. Okay, earlier in the year, it was lower, as, and then many of you have been told that there's been problems with chips, equipment, anything. Uh, I called every dealership that I can possibly get ahold of, Lori has actually heard a lot of it, me being on the phone, I've gone through Wisconsin, Iowa, Kansas, um, Missouri, South Dakota, uh, all the surrounding states that I could possibly get ahold of, every possible dealer that has to deal with, uh, any state bids, anything like that. And everybody is about around the same price, it's actually, uh, a lot of them have been around thirty-seven thousand, and I, I, I'm just beside myself, the fact that they have risen so much. Um, I did finally get ahold of the person that holds, or the, sorry, the dealership, which is the top one on the top page, which is Trevor Ford, they have the state bid, right now, and the cheapest Ford Explorer that I could find was thirty, thirty-one nine, is what I could find. I went to Rochester Ford, talked to them, average is around thirty-three, I haven't found a twenty-twenty that has been sitting on the lot for two years, and where that had a cheaper price earlier this year, it's now at thirty-three, and I can't get them to move a bit. They're just final prices, that's the way it is. So, I put together a packet with the majority of the lower bids. I can get you even more, I have a whole bunch on my computer right now that are a lot higher, these are the lowest bids I could get. Um, we're gonna try to use the old Crown as a trade-in, but to trade it in, we had to remove the equipment. They wanted to charge us fifteen hundred dollars to remove the equipment, the problem is, it's only worth fifteen hundred or two thousand. So, me and, sorry, Nick and I, yesterday, removed the equipment ourselves, and so we're there at Royals, where they're putting a plug in, where the, sorry, where the lights on the roof went. So, you get that, we're saving a lot of money doing that. Uh, Trevor Ford, Ford, they'll give us two thousand as a trade-in. So, we got that as a bonus, all the rest would give me fifteen hundred as a trade-in. I'm trying to, I, I kinda added it up in certain spots for you to take a look at, I encourage you to do yourself as well, in case I am off on anything, but I don't think that I am. So those are the prices that I, the lowest prices I could possibly get. From there, we go to any other money that I could end up throwing down. We do have a forfeiture account, and the forfeiture account can be used towards DWI's or traffic enforcement. Well, I'm guessing a squad car can go towards that, I talked to Adam Loadmeyer, who is our assistant city attorney, he, he's a backup. I talked to him, he ended up going through, and he ended up saying that he believes that we can absolutely use it, it's just not the most conventional, but we can do it, and I can, I can articulate the reasons on why. So right now, we have seventeen seventy-three in the account, we're gonna have another sixteen hundred being put into this count within the next week or so. So I added that up, plus the two thousand, and then I minus that from the totals up top, so if you see the total where it says total after money down would be twenty-seven thousand, six hundred, twenty-seven dollars, fifty-two cents. And that's just for the squad itself. Now, that being said, that squad is a twenty-twenty-two, it's a brand-new twenty-twenty-two, but it hasn't been built yet. It won't be built for at least another four months. And then you're gonna have to order the equipment that goes into it, which takes two months. After you get the equipment onboard, I mean, it, it only takes about two days, three days to build one. It's just getting the vehicle, and if there's any other kinks, I don't know how that's gonna go, but, uh, that is definitely gonna be the cheapest option, just waiting four months or so to order it. Uh, if that's the route that we wanna take. At the very bottom, I did put the fact that the radar would be at three thousand, eighty dollars. The radio is four thousand, nine hundred, sixty-three dollars, and those are quotes that I added in here, printouts from the companies. Okay, and then the install and other equipment, like, anything from computer mounts, to the printer, to other lights, and s- like that, it would be nineteen thousand, three hundred bits here. So, the company that we ended up talking to, which is, does all of our install for us down in Rochester the last couple of years now, it's Fire Safety USA. Before, he ended up quoting us that we can go one year without paying for it, he was wrong, but I did get him to actually talk to their supervisor today, and I added that email in here to the Fire Safety USA, so it does state on the back that we're good for six months after the date of the vehicle being built. So I just wanted to throw that in there, so there's no misunderstanding on his behalf, my behalf, anybody else's. I went through for the cameras, and the camera, I have been unable to get a quote on one just as of yet, so I do apologize for that, I've been contacting them constantly. Um, so, so far, for the total equipment, not including the camera, would be twenty-seven thousand, three hundred fifty-eight, and that's the total that I came up with. So the only reason that the installer and the other equipment, where last time was fourteen thousand dollars, um, it went up to nineteen, and it even says in the email that he assumed at the time, there's a lot of assumptions going around, that we were gonna be using the other old equipment that came out of the old Crown for the new squad. Traditionally, in other departments, they'll actually have, uh, updated equipment, where we did not, we're kinda starting from zero. And just to show you, the equipment that came out of the Crown, I did bring it in here today, in case you wanted me to pass it around, the camera system is still a VHS. I know, I know, the radar system, as you can see, has been passed out through probably three different departments, and it's from the early nineties. So, the majority of this equipment is old, outdated, and there's nothing we can do with it. And even the printer alone, I mean, the printer is old, very slow, but even the mount for it, I ended up building this in my workshop. So, this is wood, so I built it, painted it, put it in the squad, it looked nice while it was in there, but there, there's not much we can do. So, that's the unfortunate side of that price going up, is the fact that there is no, uh, the equipment hasn't just been, it just wasn't updated for so many years, and now we're finally starting to update everything. Yes, sir?
We're not gonna be able to reuse any of that, you're saying?
No.
Nothing?
No, we can't reuse any of that, I would put that on a call card.
And, and nobody would want it?
No, not that I know of, I was actually considering contacting the museum. I'm serious, and seeing if they wouldn't like some of the old equipment to put on display with pictures of the squad. Um, if they say no, I don't know how I'm gonna get rid of it, I'm gonna have to hold on to it, usually for getting word of technology like that, it actually costs money to even get rid of it. I'd have to talk to another department to figure that out. So unfortunately, all these prices, they fluctuate, we get so much in the last couple of months, but these are all the quotes that I can get down, and like I said, the one that hasn't been built yet, I can get down to twenty-seven thousand, six hundred, twenty-seven, uh, the other ones, you're looking around twenty-nine for the squad itself, not including the equipment. So, but the other one from the Ford dealership in Rochester, those are already on the lot, one of them's a white one, one of them's a black one. They're already on the lot right now, as of today, I just got phoned to them a little minute ago. And then, that twenty-twenty is still on the lot, but it's pretty much the same price as the twenty-twenty-one. And they're more expensive than the brand-new twenty-twenty-two, which makes no sense to me, but I don't sell cars for a living.
Well, the twenty-twenty-two will hold its value for resale in the future too, right?
Absolutely, sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
What, are you running on five years, is that what it is?
Now we are, so in the past, they just traditionally took anything that you could get out here, now we're actually putting all the equipment that, as we get it, 'cause it's so, it's so updated, I'm trying to get everything updated.
Right.
Once we get it, then we're putting plans in place, so every so many years, we update this, every so many years, we update this, and we'll just keep doing that. But those, that, that plan has never been in place before, so we're kinda starting from scratch over and over, and that's where this is coming from, and this is just a really bad time in history to be starting from scratch.
I have a suggestion.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, if you're not able, if they don't take it, and you're looking for a place where they can, um, recycle whatnot, Cora does have a program, at least they did, as far as I know, in which they took apart electronic equipment and recycled it for uses other things.
Okay, we'll talk, we'll do that later.
Just an idea.
Thank you.
Who, who does that?
Cora.
Cora.
Oh, sure.
And Hardaway.
And then, uh, if we order it, will they guarantee the price?
For the top one?
If it's ordered, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I added the quote in here, he actually just sent it to me today, like, a lot of this, I've been working the last couple of days, I mean, I've been going down to the dealerships, making phone calls, cleaning with anybody, to cut a price, give me a deal, and they're all like, nope, this is where we're at. I mean, it's not like the old days where you can go in and actually talk to them and try to get them down. Um, but yeah, so this is the actual quote right here, that's kinda lengthy. So, but that one would take about four to five months, if you guys wanna do that, it's three one nine, sorry, thirty-one thousand, nine hundred, thirty-two. For the squad, yes.
Quote, that, yeah.
Absolutely. So it seems to be the cheapest, just nothing on ground yet. So, I, either way, we're, yeah, I, I'd rather do the cheapest. But the waiting, however many months, I mean, we could definitely do it, definitely. So, just pray to God that we don't have an accident or, 'cause then we're down. 'Cause I already, we already ended up with that situation earlier this year, where we ended up having just an issue with one of the radiators, and the, not a radiator, sorry, it was a pump, in one of the squads. And then the other one ended up losing the air conditioner in the same exact day, so we're driving around in that really bad heat, and then the only car that we have is the Crown, and I was not about to be taking traffic stops with a VHS player. So you lose one squad around here, and you're, you need at least three, so, in case of emergencies.
What do other small cities do when they lose a vehicle, like they only had two, I mean, there's gotta be other people who are in the same predicament.
I was just talking to Canyon about this, they do the same thing where they keep three vehicles, and they're similar in pretty much every way. Uh, so they keep three vehicles, they just bought a used vehicle in another state, but they're getting a brand-new vehicle next year, so they're actually adding two more vehicles to their fleet. Um, and that's just because of the updates, I don't know how that's gonna go for them in the long run, but, time to tell.
How far above the budget are we with these price changes, is it a lot, for what we budgeted for?
I, 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 yeah, I, what do you guys budget for?
Well, so we've been, um, so, a few years ago, when we bought the last one, it was decided five thousand a year was gonna be set aside, obviously it's not enough.
No.
At the time, though, I guess the thought was probably it's better than nothing, or at least we have half of it.
Yeah.
I mean, we really should be doing ten thousand a year.
And that's actually one of the things that I was gonna mention today, we need to budget more money for the future. So, if we did ten thousand a year in four years, we could buy a squad with some of the equipment, we'd get a little bit more money than that, you probably gave her a fall.
Pretty new, all this is, pretty new to me, but...
So the remainder, Lori, comes out of the general fund or the differences? And the police, the police is a general fund, you don't?
Is that COVID, is that?
Um, I believe so, but I think we have a lot of ideas already for the COVID money, but, yes, I think it can be.
I talked to Kerry, he said that stuff would fall under that category, but I did not go any further in depth with him on that, so, I don't know.
I think that's the way he was talking. Yeah. At the last meeting.
Kinda how it sounded, but there was a lot of assumptions made in the last couple, and I'm not making any assumptions.
Well, I think the last meeting, no, he kinda said it was gonna be about forty. 'Cause I remember this price he gave an Explorer was just unbelievably cheap, remember that?
What was that number J C?
Twenty thousand.
Yeah, what the heck, yeah, yeah.
And I said, that's when I made a motion, I was like, I'm gonna bring her down.
Yeah, but that didn't really make sense, did it?
Wow, it sounded pretty good, that's all I know.
Yeah, that sounds too maybe true, probably.
Then he did say, something, I think, I seen him, he did say something about other eighteen, you know, five, ten, it's all the government, I'm not gonna worry.
And I was under the assumption that the radio and the, you see, there you go, I was making assumptions before, I thought the radio and the radar would have been included in the equipment.
Right.
And it wasn't, so that's why it's all separated now. So before, I thought it was gonna be part of that fourteen thousand dollars, again, I thought it was too weird to be true, and I was like, this is just amazing, it works right with everything.
So before, before we were, I think the council was talking about about forty grand altogether?
Yeah.
When I, or?
Fifty grand.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-six. Whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
Tell you the honest, uh, does the city, is there enough to, to balance that or not, or, I don't know?
I'm just looking for, uh, my schedule one, and I didn't see.
I didn't see that.
There's one.
Oh, that one.
So I would need the total of, um, the general fund, which is the top line.
Twenty forty-four, we need a command. That's ten thousand more, 'cause this is what we had last one, so, you wrote twenty-four.
We'll be getting, um, our, our LDA, our second, or...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, well, you look at the checkbook balance, you'd have to, you'd have to decide, it's there.
It's there, it's just a matter of...
You know, we just, we need to be careful.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it's there.
But if we're ordering it, it isn't gonna come in for that much, do we have to put a lot down, do we have to pay the amount, the full amount, or do we have time to kind of?
Well, so, we already have the money, uh, not, sorry. We have twenty thousand in the account right now, in just a couple of months.
Well, we'll have twenty-five this year.
We'll have twenty-five this year, and then it'll just be the two thousand, six hundred, 'cause there's no taxes on that.
Right, yep.
So it'd be the, it'd be two thousand, six hundred some odd dollars coming under the general fund, or...
Just to get us in mode.
To get the vehicle, yes, we already have that money set aside, so it'd just be that, and then the equipment is where we're running into the issue of that.
Right, and that would be quite a little time, that'd be seven months before, that would be...
We have about four months for the vehicle to get here.
It's gonna be closer to a year, by the time you get this all done.
Well, that's, I'm thinking, we went with it now and get the vehicles, we're gonna have that, or that's low, though, it might... Well, you don't.
I, I'm hoping it's not.
You can't even get anything that has a computer chip, you can't, you can't buy a Chevrolet somewhere out of right now.
It's bad, yeah, it's terrible.
So, you know, that, that's the concern, that if we have to wait that long, if we really need a vehicle, then do we go with one that is a little bit more expensive, but we have it?
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
You know, if we're going, okay, we need a vehicle, is that, you know, from thirty-one, nine, twenty-three to thirty-three, five, eighty-nine, is that worth the money, if we have to wait a year for it?
Yeah, the only thing I was worried about was resale, 'cause you start getting into these ones that's already two years old versus, you know?
Right.
'Cause then we go to sell them again, and every year, they lose a lot of resale value you bought, yeah, I don't know.
How long do you anticipate keeping it, typically?
Well, that's what you said, five years, five years.
Uh, but no, it's not gonna be kept for five years, it'll probably be kept ten years.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so we're rotating every five years, and, so, I have, the other car that we have right now is a twenty-fourteen Impala that lends it along at the best of times, and then we have the two thousand, oh, I think it's two thousand seventeen? Two thousand seventeen Ford Explorer. So, we're gonna keep that one and the Impala, get rid of the Crown, which is a two thousand and six, as you can see, it's gone.
You know, it probably doesn't make sense.
The next one go will be...
I think, I think it'd be a year before you guys are gonna get that thing.
Yeah.
I think so too, and I think if you really wanna get a squad on the road.
Yep, because if you're gonna keep it ten years, that, then the trade-in all doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, so then, go with the one from Rochester.
You want me to go with the black one from Rochester?
Well, that, that's, it's worth it.
Well, yeah, that's, yeah, 'cause some of them runs, 'cause that other one's been laying around for two years, just sitting there.
Yeah, well, and that was...
They get lot rot.
That's what I said to the guy, and he's like, this is the price we're giving, and this is the price we're gonna get, I was like, yes, sir? Yeah, there's no, no, yeah.
I mean, if it's there, it's available now, but then how, yeah, I don't know how far that's gonna set us back, if all of a sudden we put the whole package together on it right away, is that gonna kill the budget? Package together on it right away, is that gonna kill the budget for the city or not? Or? I mean, that's gonna be that much sooner.
Have to put it in our numbers.
Okay.
Put it in our numbers and then. Cause the guy said you got six months. What do you guys say? We got six months afterwards to?
Six, so for the instant, nineteen thousand, okay?
Yep.
We got six months for that. So from the day that we get the squad on the road, from that. So that's an extra six months for that.
Yep.
Um, I do have another forfeiture that we still need to put up for auction and. That can go towards some of the equipment. I don't know how much I'll get for it, but that can go towards the equipment and help offset anything. So I'm guessing I'm gonna give a twenty-five hundred for it. So it's gotta go to auction.
We have a motion or what are we thinking?
We'll do some work on it, relying on your expertise and all of yours.
Oh, yeah, just to me, it's, there's one in Rochester Ford and it's available now to get it rolling. And yeah, that makes sense, a lot of sense to me to get that one. Were there any Dodges, like the Varangles?
They were all the same price if not more. So they're not on the state contract or these guys can't even go with the state contract.
Well, most of them, I mean, most, any dealer will still.
Yes.
They'll still just give you a dumb discount.
I did try, I did try to talk to a lot of people about the Dodges. I did, I just talked to, um. Mike Becklin from Lake City. He said their county, Wabashaw, has the Dodge Varangles and they were ready.
Uh-oh, yeah.
I don't know.
Uh, Dodge's never been real good for electronics stuff, you know, but I don't know, that's it.
He told me, we just came from S F S T training, so for D U I's. We just came from that. He was one of the trainers and. I told him that I had this presentation and I knew it was staying away from your ring.
Yeah, most of my habits, I've seen two are the Ford's.
Oh, yeah, majority of them, sorry. But they, so I thought did come out with. A vehicle that would be comparable to the Ford, but I haven't heard their things about it yet. Says again, that we wouldn't have a good experience, I don't.
Well, right. Yeah, I guess to me, I'm looking more toward the Rochester Ford deal myself, but.
Got a motion?
Well, yeah, I mean, if it's on the lot and it's available now.
Here.
I'd make a motion to get that one, just so we can.
You're gonna contact Tire Safety and have them order the equipment?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a second? Any second? Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor? I, pause. Motion passes.
Glad things grow though.
Yeah, it's a lot of work with this.
Thank you.
All right, um. Could you sign? Whose name is there?
That's mine.
Well, it's you.
I'm just, was told by the mayor, he, he did call Jake and, um. Jake was going to update the prices of the last design he made and if, um, he had it here in time, I would present that, but. He does not have it here, so.
But they're being worked on.
They're, yes.
And that's three of them, is that what we're getting?
Well, there's four corners, so I would.
Four.
Yep.
Okay.
Four.
Right, yep.
I don't know. Kind of depends on cost. How many we can afford at this time.
Right.
There's money toward that though, right? Somebody said.
Lines.
On lines, it's gonna help.
And there was an individual. Yeah. Okay. Messy property discussion.
Um, we reviewed, we reviewed nine properties. Um, and I'm, I'll just read you the letter we sent. If anybody wants to see who they are, I'd be happy to share them. Um, here's what the letter says. It says, the city is good, he is ready at this time because there have been complaints. Because there have been complaints about the condition of property which may involve accumulation of junk, rubbish and other. Matters that are considered garbage or nuisance under our ordinance. Condition, if there are any unlicensed vehicles on a property, they're also considered violation of ordinance and are considered junk. We're attempting to resolve all these issues short of having to write tickets or resort to other means under our ordinance to clean up these properties. Um, we would appreciate if you could please comply with the ordinance by removing all junk, unlicensed vehicles, other miscellaneous items from your property. Which would be considered a nuisance on the ordinance. We'd like to have it done within ten days. Uh, there will then be a report back to the council about the status before we would proceed any further, but hopefully this will solve the problem, city. And there's nine, nine people, or nine property owners that we sent the, that letter to. Um, we'll see what happens, right?
Now, what did you say about ten days?
Well, we, I, I, it said we'd like to have it done within ten days.
Okay.
And then, then we're gonna report back to the council about the status, uh, before we proceed to do anything other enforcement action. I guess that's what I meant. Is that too long or not, long enough or something?
That gives them off, yeah.
They already went out, right?
Oh, yeah, it's out. I, 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 I did, well, yeah, I did. I guess, I guess I wanted to get it, you know, for, so let people, I mean, I don't think after this. Eleventh day, everybody's gonna be out there, but we need to, the reason I said ten days, I wanna have a report back to the next council meeting. So we know what, what the status is.
So you're gonna go and look at the.
Well, I did, we, I, I, what happened, I will, I don't, somebody's gonna, we, we went, I, I had the list, the letters here. So we just drove around and talked with people that we know that had, that we had concerns with, so we'll have to do that again, those nine property owners.
I just looked at two of them and gave them seven days, so.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to find out who you touched.
I'll, I'll, I'll do it after the meeting then.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Okay.
So we didn't get a letter, okay, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Not a check to mail for.
Well, I mean, we're not. I mean, I, I want people to, we're not gonna be Mr. and Mrs. Popular over this, but I guess that's what we gotta do.
Letter sounded good to me.
Yeah.
Did we have any public comment? Nothing was turned in, so. Then I saw. So we'll move on, pass that. Mayor's concerns, again Lori.
Um, last week, or last meeting, Dick had talked about showing you guys what our bonds look like. So this is what I work off of. This front page, um, the first two are paid to first farmers. And those we can pay early if we have the funds. Um, the third one is Northland Security and we cannot pay those early. Um, so if you look, I've drawn a line, August first, twenty twenty-one. Those are the amounts that needed to be paid and they're small, so they're all interest. And then the next large one will be February of twenty-two. And those are consol and interest and bond fees. So the third column is the one that we just refinanced and, um. If you change or switch to the next page. Is the total amount, you can see, um. That would match what I had hand typed. Then to know the breakdown for each one, the next several pages explain like the pool. It gets, that portion gets coded to the pool, then it's the water tower. Um, the twenty-ten street project and the twenty-fourteen street project. In our budget for that long sheet that you have that I gave last meeting, that's just the general budget. So the two pages that are for street projects go on that budget.
This one?
The, the long sheet.
Really detailed one that's sitting right to that.
With all the different percentages.
Hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so that's where I get those numbers. And then the water tower will come out of that fund and the pool will come out of that fund.
What did income from water tower?
That is from, um, we used to. Put the money from the cell tower, Verizon pays us eighteen hundred a month. And it was going into the general fund and then, um, it would actually is going to the water fund now since it's on the water tower. So that was kinda a hard thing to part with in general. It's a little more challenging.
Water towers definitely got bigger depth though.
It does, but the water fund is doing pretty well. I'll be bringing that to you soon. The other funds aren't, so we'll have to look at sewer again and, and garbage. So any other questions about the bonds?
That's really good. That just really helps.
Garbage and what? Isn't doing so good?
Well, garbage and sewer. So garbage is hurting because we are now paying the new fees to dispose.
Um, at the red.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the, the, the funds aren't in the red at all, but. They're headed that direction, so we'll have to.
After we redid it, they'd ever honored that for the, the time, a lot of time where the other one was gonna until twenty twenty, was it twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, they did, but, but the.
Disposal fees, we pay what the disposal fees are.
They call, used to call that tipping fee.
Yes, yes, it's tipping fees. So, um, they will honor the actual picking up the can and throwing it in. But not, they are not paying for what it costs them to take our garbage through that way.
Yep.
Might as well cross that bridge when we get there, huh?
Right.
Yeah, I might not have to worry about it.
Still time and they're still.
So, uh, any council concerns?
I don't have anything.
Or absent of council concerns tonight, which I don't have any, so. Nothing else, then we'll go on to motion to pay the bills.
Seven pages of them.
Payroll is a lot of it. Cause we had the last pool payroll on this one.
Oh, sure, then.
White bears.
So whenever, whenever these come in, you see them?
I do.
You see the bills as they come in, right? And basically your deal?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and I bring them here every time in case somebody wants to look at them.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Is there a lot of money left to go into the pool yet? Just proposing it, winterizing it? Does that cost quite a bit or is that?
No.
No, it's not that.
No, just pretty much half the usual.
Oh, good.
So Lori. Before, on the budget, then we have to decide by the twenty-second on the budget, correct?
Yes, yes. If you want me to like play with some numbers, I could ask the county if they will figure out what it would. If we've gone and said, okay, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, if we raise it four percent, what is that going to affect them? I can ask if they're willing to do that. If that's helpful.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
Okay.
Because what were the percentages again that you look at? When?
I just start at one and I, whatever, I just go up. Um, sometimes you'll say, uh, just let's do this amount for the levy and then it might not be exactly that percentage. I have to re-figure the whole budget then.
And then the key is, as long as we, I'm sorry.
Oh, but we can, it's better to go higher.
Right now.
Than lower, because you can't go up and add.
Right, right. In December, you're gonna do the final budget and then I will update that spreadsheet because I'll have more of the year done. So we'll have paid more bills and then you'll have a better snapshot. And then you can decide. So yes, it's better to go higher in August through September and then you can adjust lower.
You know, I guess my biggest concern is, is there's so many unknowns right now because everything is going up. And we don't have any idea, so we really, you know. It typically when they go up, they don't come back down again, correct? So looking at that, just with this, you know. Make sure that we're not shortchanging ourselves.
What we've tried to do in the past years is capture the growth, okay? So, so what that means, that, I mean, our levy could. But the amount of taxes we collect might go up, but an individual property owner stays the same. So that's the attempt to capture the growth so that, um, we're, we're capturing that growth. So if you wouldn't do that, then of course your taxes might, now that we can, ours is only, what's our, we're forty percent, is that right? City, I think it's forty percent of the, of the total tax. County, I can't remember, it's forty, forty, twenty, I think. Yeah, it's, ours is about forty. So if it's a dollar a tax, a dollar tax, forty percent goes to the city. I think forty percent goes to the school district and I think twenty, roughly now, twenty, twenty cents goes to the county. So I, we can't prevent what the other people do. But, well, they have kind of though, when maybe in other years, tried to take consideration that, you know, people aren't gonna get a raise. Because the school did their deal. We, we've talked about that, haven't we, before? To try, even though they're, that we can't control it. Kinda do the best we can, I guess, is that right?
Yep, yep, and like I said, we try to capture the growth as much as we can and maybe that. With Lori finding out from the county, you know, will help us and decide what we can go and not, you know. I mean, really our, our property taxes have not jumped other than the price of the property.
Yeah, 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 but from the city.
Right, you can't control that as.
Yeah, but from the city, it hasn't jumped so much over the years. It's been pretty, pretty good, cause of just the. And if that fits our budget, that'd be great.
We have to finish number thirteen.
So we get a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I. Motion passes. And the last thing is adjourned. We have a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
We have a motion. I think we need a second, right? I'll second. I didn't do anything tonight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. We're adjourned.